All right, we're going to call to order a Fairfax Planning Commission meeting Thursday, July 18th. Joanne, if we could do a roll call, please. Commissioner Ketchum and Vice Chair Lamott and Commissioner Hall and Chair Hamilton are absent tonight.
Madam Chair, for the record, Commissioner Hall stepped down from the planning commission this morning. There are now five members with two vacant seats.
So, we're moving to the approval of the agenda, and there are a few things that we need to clarify within this agenda before we get to that number. Public hearing item number five, 130 Wood Lane is going to be continued to our August meeting.
Item three on the consent, 39 Wood Lane is getting continued also.
That one should be continued off calendar, 39 Wood Lane.
Yeah, so 39 Wood Lane, that's what the thing says is off calendar. It's the 130 Wood Lane.
Next meeting.
The plan's going to include it, so it's continued in the next meeting.
We have two items to be continued. One of them, number five, 130 Wood Lane, will be continued to the August meeting. And number three, 39 Wood Lane, will be continued off calendar, which makes this undetermined right now. Thanks. And Laura, did you have to ask?
I would like to pull item one. I would like to pull item one off the consent calendar.
So, we'll move item number one, 9 Broadway, to a public hearing item rather than a consent item. So, with those changes, does anyone have any other adds or discussion about the agenda or movement to approve?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
So, we have meeting protocol. I don't know that I need to read the whole thing this evening. Feel pretty comfortable, but we'll all be nice to each other is basically what it says. And I'll enforce that. We are going to move to public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on an item that is not on this, tonight's agenda? If so, you have three minutes. Please come to the podium and push the button, tell us your name and address, and have your say.
David Kroll, 30 Clough Circle, here in Fairfax. As we all know, this is the season for wildfires here in California. Fairfax is especially susceptible because we are surrounded by open space. One of these areas is in my neighborhood, at the intersection of Clough Avenue and there is what is called... I would suggest that this area is vulnerable because, one, it has a large, open space of grassland bordered by trees. Many people use this area to walk their dogs. There are homeless camped up there. Teens and young adults congregate to socialize, sometimes drink, and many times smoke. There are many homes that border this hill, and it has a history of fires. I would encourage the Public Works Department to make this a priority to clear and maintain. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the planning commission, town staff, and fellow citizens, my name is Christopher Lang. I am a candidate for Fairfax Town Council. Last month, we had a meeting at the planning commission about a proposal of mine for a sign down at the parcade to notice the public about a possible future art project on public property. I want to draw your attention to a couple of things. Rather than write a letter to the editor or something, I thought we could just communicate directly. A lot of people after the meeting said it seemed like a pretty negative experience, and they spent an awful lot of time on it. And so, I wanted to give you a little public feedback on that. From my perspective, I reread the sign ordinance, and I still believe that that particular sign in question, this cloth banner, is exempt from the sign ordinance, the same as the Repack Mosaic sign was exempt, approved by Public Works and Park and Rec, the same as the Jerry Garcia Memorial sign down there at the corner of Elsie Lane was approved by Public Works and Park and Rec. These Park and Rec-approved public art signs are technically exempt from the sign code. And then also draw your attention to the 2007 resolution. There was a question about why it's been dragging on so long, this project. When I was president of the Chamber of Commerce in 2007, I asked for this project to be approved, and the town had no protocol for public art. So, that protocol was developed in response to this project, the parcade mural. Just want to let you know that. And then also Commissioner Hall had a question about why Hillside Residential Development permit had to have proper survey marks, you know, one survey line over $1,000. When I was on the planning commission back in the '90s, well, actually, it started in the late '70s. There was this house up on Ridge Road that filled the lot side to side, top to bottom, huge. And the next-door neighbor and I started something called Fairfax Guardian Group because we saw houses going up on steep hills, on stilts. So, we got 500 signatures, petitioned the town council for building moratorium for six months to focus on fire prevention, creek setbacks, and hillside building. Planning commission developed Hillside Residential Development Permit Ordinance, and on the planning commission, we are constantly talking about setbacks and property lines. And without a clear knowledge where that line is, planning commission cannot make a judicial decision. So, I wanted to give a little background on that because the question came up, and staff wasn't able to answer it. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else for non-agenda items?
Hello, my name is Paul Kangas. Couple of days ago, I spoke with Mayor John Reed about this, and so I'm bringing it before the commission. Now, there's a city in California called Lancaster, California, that has just passed a new law that's pretty amazing. It requires all new housing to be built 100 percent solar-powered. So, if you take a look around the world right now, there are about 6,000, 7,000 cities like Fairfax that have a law like that, which requires the houses to be, the new houses to be built solar-powered. And they also have a law in these cities called a feed-in tariff, which requires that the local utility pay anywhere from 54 cents to 80 cents a kilowatt hour for city, any homeowner that harvests solar energy and feeds it onto the grid. The result in Germany alone, I just came from a large conference on this, that has produced 400,000 jobs in Germany, and it will produce worldwide over a million jobs in the next year. In Germany, it produced $4 billion in cash flow, making the German economy the strongest in Europe. And what is making the German economy the strongest? It's solar energy. We are in a period in history right now where we're shifting from oil to solar. And it's going on all over the world except in the United States. Thanks to Lancaster, we have one city that's sort of leading the way. So, I thought I would bring this to your attention in case the city of Fairfax wants to introduce a law like the feed-in tariff, which will pay homeowners and require all new buildings be solar-powered. Because by doing that, you create jobs and an income for the city. So, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer any questions on this idea as to whether or not Fairfax could be shifted. Thank you.
That just got my brain buzzing. I have, I just have to start thinking about that. Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. And Chris, thank you for clarifications. So, we're going to move to consent items, although the first item on consent is the one we've pulled off consent. So, in approval of the agenda, 99 Dominga has been approved. So, if you're here for 99 Dominga, you're good to go. Unless somebody has something to add. So, it's, if there's any public comment for 99 Dominga that's not in favor of approval of that project, now would be the time to speak. Otherwise, that is up for approval. All right, so we're, it looks like we're okay there. So, can we have a motion on the consent items that are still on consent?
I make a motion to move consent items, which now just includes 99 Dominga Avenue.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so...
There is a 10-day appeal period, costs $500.
There's a 10-day appeal period for that approval, and that's a $500 appeal fee. So, let's move on to public hearing items, the first of which will be 9 Broadway, the mural, the theater, design review, and I guess the change in approved design for the mural. Linda, do you want to...
I'll give a little background here.
Go sit in there.
So, in 2010, a 1,632-square-foot addition was approved for the Fairfax Theater to create the sixth screening room. And that approval included approval of a 39-foot-by-29-foot mural of Mount Tamalpais shown in the distance beyond some trees. The mural used pastel colors of brown and green for the trees, pastel blues for the sky, different shades of tan for the clouds, and deep varying shades of green and purple for the mountain itself. And I've given you the, I only had one of these, so you're going to have to share. That's the previous artwork in the color palette. The owner is now proposing a different mural for the same upper portion of the eastern wall. The proposal includes features of the original design, such as clouds, trees, and Mount Tamalpais, but it also includes the Broadway building streetscape, a glimpse of Belinus Road, and people, as well as cars and bicycles. The artwork is much less formal than the originally proposed mural, but it does not conflict with any of the design review criteria contained in the town code, and therefore we're recommending that you approve the modification by approving application 13-9. And one of the commissioners had asked, when the theater was first built, sometime after that, a mural was painted on the side of it, and it was Loma Alta Hill that was on the side of it at that time. So, it was a different mountain.
So, does anyone have questions for staff at this time?
So, I'm just trying to, so this is just design review, that there's, this is different than...
Yes.
The mural discussion last meeting, which was about a planning commission permit. This is something that's already gone through the permitting process.
You know, that last, the last item had been, had been referred to you by the body that was authorized to approve public art.
Right.
It's very different. They sent the sign to you. So, whether or not the sign ordinance allows it or doesn't allow it, the group that has the authority to approve the public art referred that one to you.
And it, and it was a sign advertising a future mural that we didn't, we have no information what it was...
So, this was a previously approved project. They're just trying to switch out the artwork. They're not changing the size, they're not changing the location.
But in this case, does the artwork then go back to the Parks and Rec Commission for review as well?
No, because it's private, it's private property.
Okay, so they, they only reviewed the public?
Right.
Got it.
Any other questions for staff? Is there anyone here to present this project tonight? Would you like to speak to that?
Do you want me to bring this over here?
We've got a copy. Thank you.
Okay. It's the copies, prints were not that great, so.
I'm Kenan Brothers. I'm the artist that Mr. Corkrell contracted to do the work. I sent him a few things, and I hit on this idea of showing all the businesses on Broadway. And so, the mural has kind of a theme of action and relaxing in Fairfax, you know, the old sign that was in the club over there. So, it shows every single business does have something to do with, you know, nightlife or restaurants. So, it seems like a good thing to put at the entrance to the city. And it's a view from, if you stand across from Perry's in the parking lot, like, I mean, if you just took a whole bunch of pictures and made a panorama, it's kind of more or less that. Early in the morning sun, which is the time when the sun shines on the buildings, and plus there's not a lot of cars. I didn't want to put a lot of cars in it. And just hang out there around seven or eight o'clock, and you see lots of bicycles and people walking their dogs, kids. So, that's basically what the mural's about, and the sun's coming up on the left, and it's all golden and stuff. I guess Mr. Corkrell told you he wasn't going to be here?
You know, I didn't, I didn't hear from him whether, either way, but he knew about the meeting.
Oh, yeah. I guess he's own business.
Yeah, it's possible.
And me to kind of stand in. Any questions? I'm a Fairfax artist, by the way, and I have three people working with me who, one now lives in Fairfax, and the other two used to live in Fairfax. So, it's kind of a local artist project.
So, I was curious, and it's more the, there's a lot of detail, and the site is quite a ways up on the, on the wall. So, the best view of it is from, from the road, quite a ways away. So, is that kind of the intent?
Probably the sidewalk, yeah. Yeah, probably the sidewalk because it's just, it's so big, you know? You have to get back away. And there's a lot of stuff in it. I tried to simplify if I could, you know? I left a lot of detail out in the buildings. The figures in the foreground will be about, probably about 25 inches tall, almost human size, pretty much. Shows them waist up, so.
And I guess I was wondering is, in the, because as I drive Broadway, that's a great view of it, except there's a tree that blocks it. So, is the intent to have the mural so you can see it, or is the intent to have the art there that people could look at?
Yeah, there's that one big tree sitting there.
And, and I guess, as you as the artist, is that, it's more about being able to provide this, this mural for the public to see where they go to see it, not try to manage the view shed so that people have better opportunities to see it?
Look at it, you know? So...
I just want to make sure we might not get somebody saying, "We need to take the tree down so we can see the mural."
Yeah, you don't want me there in the, trying to take the tree down myself.
All right.
Laura, did you want to?
The reason why I wanted to pull it was, I just, I wanted, I thought that it was, it warranted discussion from the other members of the commission. I was on the design review board when the addition was approved. And I never, I wasn't able to attend the meeting when it got approved. I had a, had a conflict, and I just, I was always been kind of, never really liked the final, what was, what was approved. I had given my comments, and I just, the idea of a mural, I just was never a big, big fan of. I thought it was just an attempt to kind of put something on that side of the building when there probably should have been more architectural treatment or something on the side of the building. And I remember the original mural was like more subtle, more impressionistic, so, so those were my concerns.
Trying to, trying to get the context, you know, I like the original sketching that was included. In and of itself, I like the mural that's been presented here. And I think I'm just wondering in terms of the color scapeing, how that contrasts with the existing color of the buildings? If the pastels are too soft or, I think that was my only concern, and trying to look at it from scale and see how it will coordinate across. But from the design piece, I, I like it. I like how it represents our community and, absent of doing anything different to the building, I think it can be a nice addition.
Yeah. I think I, I had, my questions are, it kind of comes across as, it, I don't, I, again, appreciate the art and what it's representing. My question was, is it too busy for that, that actual space, given that where you're seeing it, it's a lot of people that are actually driving by? Maybe that's good, they'll stop and get out and look at it. Myself, I like simple, and I did like kind of the, just the mountain kind of drawing, but that's not for me to judge. But my question really is, is this too busy for this site? Are there, I like it, and are there better places for it where more people could see it? You know, and, and so that's where, I think a lot of people see it, but they won't, they won't get it because they're going to be going by it quickly. So, you know, it's kind of like, it's not, is this, is the art, I think it's great, it's, is this the right spot for this piece? That said, you know, I don't, this is a, as design review, does this enhance the building or does it make the building busier? And I, you know, I certainly respect from the architect-type perspective how that, you know, is, is it a design feature? Or will it be so much that it sort of detracts from the art itself? So, it's an open question. I'm not decided. I guess I've gotten used to that nice blue, it kind of...
Yeah. Well, there's nothing on that side of the building. I don't know where else I could put it either, so.
I'm going to weigh in, just, this is, I had the same instinct to take it off consent so that we could have this discussion about the location of this mural and murals in general. And I think it might have been our esteemed former Commissioner Hall who brought to our attention that this, this theater is a significant architectural example of a certain period. I'm not sure if it's Art Deco, or I can't remember what he told us. But it, it made me look at that building differently when he brought that up, when this addition happened. And the, the actual sign that just says Fairfax is kind of an important landmark as you come into Fairfax. And so, when I saw this mural, which I think you've done a spectacular job on, it made me think twice, like, well, maybe that's too much for this building, that there's a lot of activity, and it's, it's really a reflection of what you're standing there already looking at. So, it's kind of this double image thing that I was kind of getting. And also, I think the, the former mural was more in keeping of the, of the era of the Art Deco period for that, for that architecture. And so, like, the simplified mountain and the, the more muted colors seemed more appropriate to the building itself for, for that reason, too. So, there's a couple of reasons why I would like to see this toned down a little. With that said, I don't feel like I'm in, you know, in a position to be an art critic. I just know that when I come into town, it would be nice to see something that's a little bit more toned down, a little calmer, that works with the architecture of the building as well as the feeling of the town. With that said, I'd love to have you talk to the Parks and Rec Department about this campaign they're running to do a long, narrow mural on the parcade wall. So, this could be a win-win here. But I, right now, I'm not, I'm not feeling as comfortable about putting this much detail that high in that location on that building. So, that's, that's my two cents. Anyone else wants to weigh in with that? Do you, do you have a response to that? I mean, do you, I would love to have a conversation about this more than anything.
Yeah, I, I hadn't, I guess Dave had not brought up the point of maybe trying to tone it down to match the architecture, because it is a great building. And I could have made it simpler. In fact, the first one I gave him was a bit simpler, but he liked the colors and the idea and the concept on this one, so. And I kind of have a four-week window to do this in, too, or we kind of run out of time this year.
Can, I have, it's more of a question for staff, but I'm trying to figure out, was, was the mural sort of a requirement to accommodate the mass of the structure? Or was it a design feature that was always requested to be a part of it, or was it added on at the end? I'm just trying to know about the history of it.
You know, I think it was kind of a combination of everything. People were, it was both. There was a lot of talk about trying to have more vegetation there to screen that blank wall, and then the mural got brought into it. But, you know, you have options here. If the artist wants to work with you, I know, I know that the owner's trying to get it done this year, but maybe that just can't happen. You could continue it and see if they want to come back with something that might meet the direction you've given them? Or you could take action tonight.
And, and I would say, I think it, I'm very comfortable with an open conversation ongoing. I think, and it triggered, that Fairfax sign is, to me, that's iconic. Like, when you're driving in, that's, that's the coolest thing to be able to look at when you're on Broadway. And, and so, you know, then you have this competing, on the same building, you have two competing facades that are really very different, you know? And, and that's, you're in Fairfax when you see that sign, you know? And so, it's, it's not about whether what's presented is, I think it's great, it's where it go, where, where could it, where would it be best? I think it represents the town in a way that is very nice, and I could see it on a lot of things, like cards and, you know, everywhere. But does it need to be up there? Is that the best place for it? So, but, yeah, I think an ongoing conversation, because I'm not saying that nothing should be there either, it's just, how do you do it in together?
I think one of the things I like about it, while it's a snapshot now of how things look now, in 10 years, as businesses change and evolve, it is nice getting a timepiece somewhere in, in the town of, this is how things looked in 2013, just as it's neat looking back at when the town first incorporated or before that. But again, I think I'm leaning with, wow, this could be great for the parcade, could something a little more nature in tone without detracting from the Art Deco you put into place on the building as we have right now.
I was just going to remind you that after you're done with the dialogue with the artist, you might want to open up to the public, and then when you close that, I've got some ideas brewing.
I just have a quick question for staff. We, we already have an approved piece of artwork, and I'm just wondering if it's something that we could work with the artist on what's already been approved so that they don't have to come back or continue or just say...
You're asking if the original approval is still in place?
Yes, but it's another artist's work.
So, why don't you go through the process a minute?
Do you have anything else you'd like to add before we open it up to the public?
I guess not. I was just going to say if it's, like, I do have a four-week window I have to do this in. And a few of the guys I'm working with, too, can't really get to. We don't want to try and do it in September, I don't think, it might rain.
Okay.
Plus, we're busy.
Yeah.
So, if I had to redesign it, yeah, there's a lot of stuff there. You could take out some of the people, is that, and just have buildings, is that more what you're... There's a lot of businesses there, there's a lot of stuff, I understand.
I'm not sure any of us are comfortable enough to say, "Well, I'd like you to take out that, but not that." So, I, I guess we would leave that to you in, in, in our discussion, but maybe we should hear from anybody in the public who might have some input, and we can come back to So, is there anyone in the public? So is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on this subject?
It was very nice, I think.
Would you like to come to the podium and have a discussion?
My name is Otis Guy. I live upon Ridge Road. I really liked Loma Alta. That was a very nice look. You know, for me, still, the Fairfax on the theater is, you know, iconic and very, you know, Art Deco. But this seems like a very nice landscape. You know, you go to different towns and you see, you know, landscapes like that on buildings of a snapshot of the town. I mean, good art's still good art. It's kind of hard. Where do you, do you judge? Do you want something, you know, soft and fuzzy like kind of Loma Alta was, which was very nice. But it's nice to have a change. We had a Loma Alta for a long time. You know, so I kind of look at, as a chance to have a change and something different. But that's, I, I see the sign of, of the theater in this to be completely two separate things. I mean, I don't, you know, the mural on Good Earth, I mean, I've actually never walked over and stood and looked at it. You know, I just kind of see colors as, as I ride my bike by or something. I don't know, it just, it seems nice.
My name is Lena Estrella, and I come from Seattle. I live here now. But the town that I live in, in West Seattle is, has murals everywhere. And they're really beautiful and historical. And I actually have gone to the Good Earth and stood in front of it and looked at every single character and really appreciated what it brings to the community. And I am an artist, and I don't think that would conflict with the sign. I love the Art Deco and the Fairfax sign. But I think it is two very different areas. And when you're walking, you can stop and look, and you don't have to mess with the tree. There are many pedestrian-friendly people and cyclists that can see this beautiful artwork. And then when you're driving, you tend to look up at the Fairfax sign.
Excuse me. May I take your last name, please?
Sir, anyone else from the public that would like to comment on this, in this discussion? Okay, well, we'll bring it back for further discussion and see where we get. Did, did you want to add something here?
I just wanted to highlight what the artist said. He's got a four-week window if this is going to go forward now. So it's a little bit of a time crunch to, to send it away and have it done this year. Second, it sounded like that there was sort of a, an agreement that the last mural was liked in terms of its nat- naturalness and not having so much man-made. I mean, your point about the, you know, the historic part of town and showing the historic part of town in scale, I think it's a point well taken. And yet, I don't think that part of town's going to change anytime soon. I think that, so you've got the one thing that, the change, the radical change from the natural environment landscape to the built environment landscape, right? You've got the other artist's work on the, the natural landscape, so this artist would have to come up with another natural landscape. I, one thing that struck me about the orientation of this mural, it's, it's 90 degrees off from the perspective of the mural, of what it's reminiscent of. So it's sort of like, that's, when you look that way, you don't see the town that way. And that, so I was just putting those two together. And I was thinking, if you wanted to give direction to go in the natural landscape from the direction that you're viewing it, it actually might be a play on what you were saying of harking back to when the town wasn't built. What you would see looking that way with the town not there. And perhaps...
Like the train station and, is that what you're saying?
What's that?
Even before town, even before the train.
It's up to you. I'm just saying, just one idea.
Before built environment?
Just one idea. If you felt that was a, a good direction based on what you've all discussed, then you might be able to give him license because one could extrapolate that view. It is what it is. The hillside is the way it is. The vegetation has changed, but it is what it is now. Anyway, just a thought.
So, Commissioners, you have more to add here?
I don't, I guess I'm leaning to, I like it. I, I like how it represents what we have. I like how it depicts it. I guess if anything, I would err on maybe pulling out a few of the people that are in play, maybe focusing more on the built environment and the natural landscape, pulling out a few people. I, I like it. I can just see postcards of this representing our town, so.
I would be leaning towards a continuance to see if there's a way that we can kind of make it a little more subtle. I agree with your comments, Shelby, Vernon's comments, Jim's comments. I mean, when I look at the, I know the colors aren't represented, but it just, it looks a little stark in relation to the, I mean, it's, it's a big, big contrast. And I like something a little more subtle.
I've, I really have, I guess I have come to be used to that simple wall. And there's something interesting. And it's, it's not as big as I think we all imagined it to be when it was proposed and when it went up. Like the small architectural details actually, I know, maybe it's not quite what it could be, but I think it gives it depth and, and it doesn't look like a big massive wall, which I think was the original concern. And it's, in a subtle way, it puts all the focus on the Fairfax sign. I'm looking at the letter from the applicant saying, we haven't been able to move forward with the approved design, therefore we're submitting a new one. So I keep, that's where I keep going is, was it approved because that was the way to make it work? Or was it, or was the only way to get the, that extra space, that sixth theater, to put a mural on the wall? So I'm just...
You'd have to go back and ask the design review board members why they approved it and...
Because I'm, I'm feeling like...
They each had their own reasons.
Is this forced, I, again, I think the art is great. I think it, there's a lot of different ways that I can see it being used. But as this mural at this location, that's, that's what I'm having concerns about. And, and I think just in the five minutes of other ideas, there's, there's 20 different perspectives on, wow, here's a, that would look amazing, you know, what it looked like when there was the creek coming through, and that was it, you know? Drive the Olima Valley. That's what this used to look like, was the Olima Valley. What did it look like when it was, the parcade was a train station? You know, like, there's all kinds of perspectives that you could be looking at. So, you know, so again, it's not a criticism of the art. It's, it's the question of, is this the right spot? Is this too much for this space? And I think that's what, as design review, it's, is this architecturally kind of fitting in? Is it part of the character of the town? I, I like the idea that Fairfax is, we would want to have these things, but this building, it kind of, is it forcing it on this building, I guess, so.
Well, you know, you, they have an approved piece of artwork in place. So they still have a way to go forward, you know, if you choose not to approve this, in this location. Then it's up to the owner to negotiate with the artist or talk to his legal counsel as to how he can try to replicate her artwork, you know, without getting himself in trouble. And the art, and the owner also has the option, if you deny it, to, to appeal it to the counsel, so. Or you can continue it if you think, you know, want to work on it.
I'm just going to chime in for my urban design classes that I teach. You know, there is that, how do you pinpoint character and what a town has and what a town feels. A San Juan Capistrano is very prescripted and a few very standardized colors that we have to use on all the buildings in downtown and the same architectural design, the same roof tile. Fairfax isn't like that. I mean, that, that's one of the uniqueness elements that people like, is it's diverse and different, and there's still the old town character. So I guess that's why I'm, I'm thinking, as opposed to coming up with one prescripted recipe, I think it would work. I think there's concerns, and I, I think the colors, there's a bit of that concern. I don't know, I, I still think it could, could really add to it, so.
I feel like, I mean, we're... I, I completely agree with what you're saying, Roxanne, in terms of, of, like, the idea of the, kind of the snapshot of downtown. And that it does add some diversity. Having heard from some members of the public too, I feel like, well, okay, this, you know, this is part of the change that we're willing to accept and, and see happen on a, on a really kind of lovely level. You know, it could be really different changes that we, we're discussing. But, so, part of my desire to just have this discussion was to just kind of see where everyone is and, and take, take the temperature of as many people as possible. And I think you've made some really good points. And the one thing that I do know about murals is that they're pretty ephemeral. They're, they, they come and go. And so this may be the snapshot of 2013 and that it may, you know, evolve into something else at another time. And, and it's not like you're developing a whole new shopping center or something, or putting in place an ordinance that's like the Titanic to move around. So I think that in the, in the scheme of things, of change in town and, and what the effect will be in town, this is a, this is a pretty good one. And so, maybe with similar to Jim's suggestion, if there's a way that we can move forward with some direction of finding a, a slightly simplified version of this. I know that the client wanted it popped up a little bit. But if we can find some language that describes a slightly toned down version of this to allow it to move forward, I think that would be a good way to go considering the time constraints. Because I'm not sure that continuing it is going to get us any, anything necessarily better or more appropriate. So that's kind of where I'm leaning right now in terms of resolving where this goes. Do you have a thought?
Well, I, I don't know if I would be comfortable going ahead and giving approval based on something that we, just on direction and not really seeing what the final product would be. So I think that would, it would be difficult.
Madam Chair, just a reminder, you need three votes for something to be passed.
Right. Thank you. Well, we can put it to a vote. And if anybody wants to make a motion to go one way or the other, now would be the time to do that.
Yeah, I think it's important, if, if, if we're talking about continuance, I think it's important to give guidance. So, I think that needs to be part of the motion. I really, the thing I'm uncomfortable about is, I don't want to be critiquing the art because I think it's great. I'm looking at it as, how does it fit in with the character and the structure of the building? And so I think it's important that even if we're making those comments, that's the context that it's being made and not as a criticism of, of what's actually presented. Because again, I think we all agree, it's, it really is great and a great representation of the town. So, I mean, but I don't want to be prescriptive either. So it's, and I, yeah, it's, and open to staff suggestions on language that might be better to use.
One, one other heads up. The, you know, the artist said he can't, he's got a four-week window to paint a mural. That doesn't mean that something can't be changed and brought back to you.
So do we have a motion? Or do we want to discuss further? I can't, I can't make a motion.
Do you have suggestions for any sort of constructive, helpful direction? I know we've had a, I think we all have different perspectives, whether it's, it's maybe not this place, or I, I don't feel comfortable saying it should be, we should take a few things off or put a few things on. I think it's, my perspective is it's, for that location, it's very busy. And it, that's in very much contrast with the simplicity of the building and, and that, the Fairfax sign. So I think simplification, whether it's more nature, I think, to me, the elegance of the simple line drawings, kind of that craftsman, that simplicity, almost like stained glass, you know? That, it, it's so subtle and, and just there as shapes rather than a picture. You know, this almost looks, I think from far away, it would almost look like a picture.
Everybody's pulse. What if the buildings were removed and otherwise the pictures out as is? With the landscape and the colors at sunrise or sunset and the clouds brought all the way down?
And I would say, I think that, that works. I think what, but you still have all the textures of the trees and things like that. It's, that's even quite busy to me. But that's just my personal perspective as opposed to, I'm not saying we should have buildings or not. It's, it's, how do we do it in a way that's simple and sort of representative? Or what, what, what does fit in with that building? If that's really what this is a question about. As a, as a design feature to modify the mass of a wall that people were concerned about, so.
So Laura, do you have something kind of in, in mind? Like, do you picture something different? Or are you leaning back toward, similar to the original artwork? Or, I mean, you're, you're saying you're leaning toward continuing so that they just come up with something new? Or do, can we start working on some direction for the applicant?
Can I just remind you, they'll have access to your, the recording of the meeting tonight and the comments made also, so they could get a flavor for where you've all been?
Well, I kind of echo what Vernon's thinking about. I mean, I actually think it's, it's, it's a lovely drawing and design, but I'm not quite sure if this is the right location. And I had the same thought, that this could look great on the parcade. So I would probably, I, I like the idea of something more landscape and nature. Or I think part of it is just the, the texture, the buildings, all the different colors, which is what it is in real life. But perhaps maybe, that was another good suggestion that Jim gave where it was, or could be like old time, where it was more like black and white, black and white kind of, or more muted, less colors, I think is, is really what I'm struggling with.
And I want to apologize. It's for you all to deliberate, make the decision on this. I don't, I want to be very careful. I was trying to just distill what I could out of your comments. I don't, sorry.
Well, it sounds like we're leaning in, in a certain direction. Again, anybody want to make a motion here?
I, I motion for a continuance, but I don't know what the other...
I guess I don't, I'd make a motion to approve the design as is. We have a motion on the table now, so we're not, we can't make another one, but we could...
You have a motion on the table.
So you call for a second. If there's no second, then the motion dies. Okay. So do you want to clarify your motion for us? Or just a simple continuance, then that's it?
I would, a continuance, and then maybe if we could see a revised design based on the suggestions that were, that we discussed.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
We're going to do roll call vote, please?
Thank you, sorry. Commissioner Kirline.
Aye.
Commissioner Esset Loftström.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lamott. Commissioner Ketchum.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
So, the, the item's been continued for the revision of maybe simplification and review of, I guess of our discussion tonight, so that we can simplify the mural a little. So, the next item on the public hearing agenda is 1966 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. Linda, do you want to fill us in?
Yeah, the applicant's proposing to remodel the structure, dividing it into three separate commercial spaces with one living unit on the second floor. The front 2,700 square feet are proposed for use as a bicycle museum and will include a 560 square foot loft area for bike storage. The middle 1,800 square feet are proposed for use as some type of office space, and the rear 2,700 square feet will be used as a commercial kitchen wholesale food production area, which is what it's operating as now. There are no proposed expansions of the building. So, it requires a use permit to combine, to have a mixed use in the building. And the purpose of the conditional use permit process is to allow for the proper integration into Fairfax of uses which might be suitable only in certain locations in the town or in a zone, or only if the uses are designed or laid out on the site in a particular manner. The central commercially zoned areas of the town are the central business district and retail commercial heart of the town. The proposed mix of commercial businesses with the bicycle museum at the front facing Sir Francis Drake's public sidewalk will cater pedestrians while allowing the rear of the building to be used profitably as general office space and the wholesale kitchen, wholesale commercial kitchen with one residential unit, which is a permitted use in the central commercial zone upstairs. The proposal meets the intent of the CC zone by catering to foot traffic. Staff reviewed the traffic that would be generated by the three proposed uses, and what you do when you're looking at traffic is you determine whether the new uses will generate 100 average daily trips more than the previous use. The previous use was on the Good Earth. And the average number of daily trips was 1,250 for that use. So, the proposed mixed use of the building would generate 124 average daily trips, which is much less than the number generated by the previous use. So, we made the determination that the proposed mixed use was not going to be, would not require a traffic permit. The parking and loading complies with the, what the town code requires, and the architectural changes that are being made comply with the design review criteria. Therefore, we're recommending that you adopt, approve the application by adopting the resolution. And we just wanted to make one change to the resolution conditions on page 11 of the report. We wanted the language for the condition under building official conditions that read, "A lot line adjustment must be approved," and the map recorded, Marin County Recorder's Office prior to issuance of any building permits for the office, or for any building permits to change the wholesale kitchen areas. We want that also repeated down under the fire department conditions, number three. No, no, I'm sorry, number two. Number two under fire department makes it sound like we're requiring the lot line adjustment be obtained prior to the museum opening. The museum meets the fire department and building code requirements for exiting right now. So, we don't want that held up for the lot line adjustment. And that would conclude our report.
Any commissioners have questions for staff on this project?
I have a question on the lot line adjustment. So, is that something that gets reviewed by the, by the planning staff, building staff?
The code actually says that the planning director has the authority to approve a lot line adjustment, but also has the ability to refer it to the planning commission if he sees any issues that he feels need to be reviewed by the public. So, that would be the planning director's determination when they file the lot line adjustment. They are required to file that with the town with a fee, and it gets reviewed by the town engineer to make sure no easements are covered up or changed by the lot line relocation. So, there'll be a formal review, it'll get routed to fire, MMWD, all the usual departments.
Can you point me to the, where the lot line adjustment is on the figures? I'm just trying to... Is it on A2?
It's where the back exit is going to be for the office space. They're required based on building and fire codes.
So, basically along where the mural is?
If you look at page A2.
Yeah.
That's not a good one. Hang on. Look at A, look at A3. And if you look at the office space, they're going to have to put in a rear exit for that office space. So, when that business opens, it has to...
Required property, so that's just a couple of feet to get that set.
Right, it's the west side of the building.
So, just a couple of foot difference. Okay.
Yeah.
Is the, is there a different property owner for that, for that property?
It's listed in the assessor's office under a different name. It's an LLC, I believe, property next door. I guess, my consideration is when we're thinking of the central commercial zone district and the permitted uses, and kind of the highest, best use of that space. I mean, the museum definitely jumped out at me as maybe not the highest, best use for some of our prime real estate in the center of town. So, I guess, what are, what are the main uses that we permit, besides retail and...
Our, our code is quite antiquated. It gives a long laundry list, which is rarely done these days.
I'll read you some of the permitted uses. Yeah. Have to find it first. So, the list of permitted uses starts on page 144 of the town code, and it goes from A to Y. So, banks are permitted, antique stores, barber shops, beauty shops, grocery stores, florists, electrical appliance sales and repairs, delicatessens, paint, glass, and wallpaper stores, printing, publishing, and engraving businesses, radio, television, stereo, sales and repair, sporting goods stores, yard goods stores. So, one of the, one of the issues we always had with the other business, it became very popular, it's right next to a residential neighborhood, and kind of outgrew its space and created problems for the residences adjacent to the business. So, that's the list of, that's just a review. I mean, there's more uses listed. Variety stores.
So, if, in the same context, if we're approving office space, then would they have to come back to, if that office space is not consistent with this list, do they have to come back and ask for that? I mean, essentially what I'm, what it sounds like is happening, and I'm not, whether I'm concerned or not, that's not the issue. It's, we're going from one single space to three separate. So, kind of like Fair and Selm, where you've got different shops, and, you know, we had the pet store come in last, last time to get a variance to go into that one little space. I mean, theoretically, with that office space, we could have, we're subdividing this unit...
They're trying, they're trying to do what was done for the 31 Bolinas Road, which is to get a mixed use approved with a specific, so 31 Bolinas, they got the wholesale Lydia's Food Preparation approved, they got a number of spaces approved for types of body work and chiropractic. So, they want a general office space approval, that's what they're asking for. And what staff would do is when they get a candidate, we would ask for particulars on the business. If it was something that didn't seem to meet what their proposal was, we would have them come back to modify the use permit. But if it was an office space that had the same number of employees that they've indicated, they would be allowed to go in.
Any other questions for staff at this point? Okay. Would you, the applicant like to present the project for us? Tell us a little about it?
Morgan Hall, Tenwall Schlain, Fairfax. One preliminary thing, I think I'd rather be up there than down here. I hope you understand that things happen. So, I apologize if you guys are going to have to work a little bit harder. Anyway, what we have here is, is a real opportunity for, put a facelift and use it differently than the way it's been used in the past. And best of all, the, the new uses that'll be occurring will be exciting, they'll be good for the community, and they'll have a greatly reduced impact on the neighborhood than the previous use as a grocery store. So, what's exciting about this? Well, the bicycling museum in the cradle of mountain biking, I think that's pretty cool. The guys that are in the process of putting this together are some of the very pioneers that got the wheels rolling back 40 years ago. There's a few of them that are still alive. They tried to kill themselves in the 70s, but it didn't work. Anyway, they're, they're a little bit nervous about this whole process. They actually haven't signed a lease yet. It's all in the works, but, so, be gentle with them. But I, the, you know, the fact that the museum would be here would be, would certainly help create, reinforce the idea of Fairfax as a destination. People would come to Fairfax, take a look at the museum, among the other things that are happening around town, and patronize the local businesses, and, and it's a real good thing. The, the proposed office spaces in the middle of the building are, there are no leases signed at this, at this juncture. It's, it's kind of up in the air. The, the plans show that middle area as being tentative. And some of the, the technical details of the job are kind of contingent on the fate of that office space. At present, the, the idea of the lot line adjustment or an easement would be necessitated if that office space were occupied. All the exiting, fire exiting requirements, building code requirements are actually met up to the point where that office space would be occupied. The office space would require exiting out the west side of the building, and in the design, it calls for not only the exit door, but some windows. Presently, the, the property line is about 30 inches away from the, the west wall of the building, and five feet minimum is required by the fire and building code in order to have openings in that wall. So, that's kind of what that's about. The, the present exiting for the museum is satisfied with two exits without having any openings on that west wall. The kitchen is, is satisfied in the plan in that, along the east side of the wall, there will be an exitway excavated out along that wall that would be excavated down to the same height as the floor inside the building. So, the present, one door that comes out of that side of the building from the kitchen presently involves going up some stairs, that would be at the same level as the exterior. So, that would be an accessible exit. We're also adding a, an exit in the approximate location where the entrance to the office spaces would be. That would provide an additional exit for the kitchen. So, the kitchen would have three exits, actually. The new one where the office entrance would be in the east wall, the existing east wall door with downstairs, and then the existing rear exit. That all presupposes that the demising wall that would go in between the kitchen and the office is not built until the offices are occupied. So, presently, the owner does have an agreement for an easement along the west property line. It's not technically a lot line adjustment, but it serves the same purpose. So, that may be something to be noted about the wording of the resolution. So, those technical details aside, the idea of having offices in that building, I think would be, would help, would help the town, and that one of the things about Fairfax is that it, it seems to have primarily a nighttime use going on. And there's the daytime use, people, local citizens coming through town will frequent the town, but there isn't really a great concentration of offices, per se. If there was, were offices there, that would, would help, you know, lunch businesses and perhaps daytime retail. So, that's one good thing that would come out of that. Lastly, the, the present proposed uses would significantly reduce the impact on the neighborhood. The average daily trip calculations, I believe, showed that when Good Earth was functioning there, where there were 1,200 or so daily trips to, to the store. The present proposed use is, it's either, I think it was 124 or 44. So, it's, it's almost a 90% reduction in activity to that property. So, I would believe that the neighbors would be overjoyed. In addition to that, the uses wouldn't involve truck deliveries, as I see it, certainly not the way they would have been previously for the old store. And also, the one large, I guess it's a, it's a refrigeration compressor that was in the rear of the building is going to be removed. So, two significant sources of, of noise are not going to be there anymore. So, that again, in addition to the reduction in the average daily trips, will render the thing a lot less impact than it was previously. So, I think that the overall proposal will be quite an improvement. It will help the community. I think the neighbors should be happy about it. So, I don't know, if you have any additional questions, you can ask me, I'm not sure if you... you would like to discuss design review. I wrote a one-page description of what I felt were the pertinent components of the design review.
I have a question. Morgan, I'm a little bit confused about the second exit for the office. I mean, I don't want to second-guess the building and fire because I know they reviewed it, but it seems like the occupancy for the office is low. So that's just one thing I would, if you could, if you have any more information about that.
Well, as projected at this point, there's an exit out the west wall and an exit out the east wall.
I just was confused as to why the second exit.
You're saying you think the second exit might not be required?
Yeah.
Can't answer that, but both the fire and the building said that the lot line adjustment was required.
Yeah, I mean, it may be, it may be worth going into a little more detail.
Do you know what the width of the building is, Morgan?
Excuse me?
Do you know what the width of the building is?
I believe it's 60 feet.
I don't, it might be worth checking out, I mean, it looks like.
Well, I guess what you could do is if that's, if you think that it might not be required, I would just, you know, there's that, I think I included the condition that says if any departments waive any of their requirements in writing to the town, they're eliminated. You just make sure that condition's in there.
If I understand right, your fire sprinklers are gonna need to be included, too. So that may give some more latitude.
Well, there was a consideration, too, if there were offices there getting some natural light in as well, so. But we are gonna sprinkle the building.
I had a question also about the residential unit that's proposed. Can you explain that a little bit more, if I read the plans correctly? It looked like there's seven-foot ceiling height proposed, is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, right now, that existing rear portion of the building is, has two levels. The lower level is presently and will continue to be storage for the kitchen, and the upper level is a mezzanine of which previously, I believe, housed the, some of the offices for Good Earth would be converted into an apartment with a seven-foot ceiling, which is the present minimum ceiling height.
Is there any, it looks like there's some, like, roof trusses or something, there's in the attic space, is there any way to utilize some of that extra space?
There was some thought about that, and there is a possibility of faulting or raising the ceiling in certain areas. There is, there are two areas, north and south, in that rear space that could be raised a little bit. There's a fair amount of equipment up in that attic. On the west side, there's a HVAC unit, and on the east side, there's a lot of, was hot water, and there's a solar display up on the roof above it. But there is the option to raise that ceiling a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to clarify, in the discussion of the, in the packet, it says that outsite storage containers and refrigeration at the rear of the site will remain. But you said the refrigeration unit was going away, so I'm just trying to.
Well, the, what will remain are there are three containers out there. They're, I believe, eight feet by 24 feet, and there is one, I'm not sure if it's a freezer or cooler, and they each, they have compressors which are quite small. The one large piece of equipment there, I believe, was used to run the, all the refrigeration inside the old store, and that's gonna be going.
So that's shown kind of at the northeast corner, that grayed out, it says electric and slab, that's what would be going?
It would be the northwest area there, there's a rectangle that's probably dotted in.
Okay, a dotted rectangle, got it.
Yeah. And I believe that was the source of a fair amount of sound.
Okay.
Can you explain a little bit about what's more about the proposed exterior changes for the building? I think there's gonna be some changes to the facade, and is there anything besides the windows and the exit on the west side?
Can I just jump in there? This is just the way I see it, and that's a design review question, so if there's any other kind of general questions we have, then we can ask Morgan to do kind of a design review discussion that you've prepared, correct? Of course you have.
If I could read my statement, yeah.
So if there's anything else other than design review questions, we'll get through those and then go to that to kind of keep, keep things clear, if that's okay with you? With that said, I have a question about hours of operation. It's pretty distinct hours of operations outlined here, but I could see where the museum would want to have special events or festivals or, you know, speakers or gatherings, and so, do you foresee any of that, or do you guys foresee any of that? And how does this space kind of take care of those kind of special events outside of the daily operation of the museum?
I believe, it's been a little while since I looked at it, but I believe the hours of operation show that maybe a Thursday night, that it would stay open later, that initially at least would be the time that something like that might occur. Beyond that, I really, I don't know, you know, what is planned. It's sort of a work in progress right now. The organizers are kind of waiting to see what happens tonight.
I don't have any other questions to you. We'll go to design review, the design review portion of exterior.
Okay, well, I'll just, I'll simply read what I wrote. "The proposed work leaves the existing building largely unchanged. Its size is the same, and with the exception of some new windows and some doors, its two-side and rear elevations keep the existing materials and colors. The existing landscaping is being augmented, and the proposed parking exceeds what is required. There is a landscape plan there, and new plant material will be put in, and the irrigation system that is there now will be upgraded. The building's front facade is where the principal design changes are made. The, these changes are modest and simple. They reference the building's original mid-century vintage. The aesthetic of that period emphasized clean lines and geometry and recognizable materials. Replacing the existing green awning with a band of silver ribbed metal accentuates the building's horizontal aspect." This is basically what will go on the facade. There is an existing flat roof that comes out from the building that is covered up by the green awning right now. This, this material will be, the color of it will be similar, but more silver. I believe there's a sample on the color board that will show what color this will go to. It's very similar. So the, the idea with the front facade is the present materials that are there now. The brick that's there is a low, wide brick, very characteristic of that period, mid-century. Those will be sandblasted and cleaned up. And then the upper roof area, which is, or the upper wall area above the roof in front, is stucco, and that'll be painted basically to match the brick color. There'll be a sign mounted on to this in front denoting the museum, and that, I believe, will be submitted for a separate sign permit. Also, on top of the roof, there'll be a bunch of bicycles spaced evenly across the roof there, and I think they'll all be painted silver. One of the reasons for the silver is that the window framing that exists now is a mill-finished aluminum, again, characteristic of mid-century, so we're gonna go, we're gonna take that and run with it. For instance, there was an architect, Richard Neutra, that did a lot of work in Southern California, the mid-century in silver, he would take wood, wood structural members and paint them silver to look like metal. So it's not uncharacteristic. So I believe there's some bollards that will be in the front of the building where the bicycle parking will be, those will be painted silver as well. So the hope is to keep, keep the form and massing of the whole front facade fairly, fairly simple. You've got, looking at the building on the left side, you've got this tall brick mass, and then coming off of that horizontally will be a band of this, it's about, I don't know, 50 feet long. Below it will be a band of glass and aluminum, and below that will be brick, fairly straightforward stuff. And I guess it might just be added that the whole mid-century idea is presently, people are looking to those structures in an effort to preserve that look before they get taken away. It's just, it's like any architectural period, after a certain amount of time, it gains a certain amount of venerability, and people my age who are very, very much into the craftsman look, my theory is people always want to live in a house like their grandparents had. So my parents had a modern house, but my grandparents had a craftsman, so now the 30-somethings and 40-somethings, they want to be, they want to do a modern house. You can see it in all the magazines, like Dwelling, this, that, and the other things. So anyway, I think it lends itself pretty well, also given the fact that some of these old timers back here date from that period. 50s, 50-ish. So I think there's something appropriate about it.
Did you want to go back to design review question?
I had a question, I believe it's the west side, is that the side that's next to what's now the garage? Where the easement or lot line adjustment's proposed? I guess in the proposal, there's some windows. What is, is anything gonna happen with the existing mural? Is that gonna stay, or is that, can you explain?
There was some discussion of that in the plan. If you look at the three windows that are on the hypothetical office there, the southernmost one would interfere with the mural. However, the owner does tell me he does have an agreement with whomever was responsible, I believe, for the mural, that he can do what he wants with it. Now, my suggestion would be to probably not have that window to interfere with the mural. You can probably create enough light there. Some of the design of that office space was involved, there was a prospective tenant for that space, and we went to a fair amount of effort creating a space for that tenant who wound up not, choosing not to occupy it. So we just kind of left it at that.
Any other questions for Morgan? Well, thank you, Morgan, for being so thorough. We're gonna open it up to the public to weigh in on the proposal. Anybody from the public want to speak on this project? Three minutes, state your name and address, please.
Hi. Again, I'm David Crowell. I live at 30 Claus Circle. And I'm really impressed with the design that came up, and applaud the use for the space as a bicycle museum. I think it will be a great addition to the town. I do have some conditions that I would like to see put forward for the use, and some of these Morgan has already addressed, so it'll be a little redundant. The first one concerns the wood-burning oven that is in that space, and I would like a condition be put in place that that wood-burning oven be decommissioned and not allowed to be used again. Common sense and all reports verifying wood smoke as toxic and carcinogenic should lead us all to that kind of a condition. Secondly, to limit all major deliveries for the site to be after 8:00 a.m., as this impacts the residential quality of the life in the neighborhood abutting the project. Third, parking should be absorbed on-site or in areas of town, not in residential neighborhoods. I don't see this as a major concern for day-to-day operations, but if there are festivals or other events, I think that should be taken care of. And the last issue is decommissioning the exterior refrigeration units, which it seems like is in the plan. Thank you.
Alice Ducaye, 30 Claus Circle. I would like all those big storage cases removed from the parking lot. I don't know why they have to be there on a new project. Not just the generators and the refrigeration units, but there's huge storage containers in what was supposed to be a parking lot. So I just would like them all to be removed in the new project and it returned to be parking lot. Otherwise, you know, I think the project is fine. And my original complaint with that enormous wood-burning stove, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it was, it somehow slipped through without any use permit because it wasn't even looked at. And it's really important that it not be fired up again. It poured smoke into the neighborhood for several years, and we couldn't do anything to get it stopped. And we really want that thing decommissioned permanently. So that's all. I mean, you know, I think your project is appropriate, totally appropriate.
My name is Peter Anderson, and I live at 19 Claus Drive, which is right behind the Good Earth Market. And our concern is the refrigeration units. When we lived there, when we first moved in, three years ago, our house vibrated like a tuning fork 24 hours a day. a tuning fork 24 hours a day. And we put in about $8,000, $9,000 worth of insulation and soundproofing, and that helped a lot. And Good Earth actually contributed to some of that work, which we really appreciate. But the problem didn't end until they relocated, and we were assured that the refrigeration units would be decommissioned. And we just want to make sure if cooling goes back in again, that it's done to code, because the old units were 25, 30 decibels over the legal limit. And that made living in our house intolerable. We thought we could live with the sound, but at nighttime, our whole house would hum like this, and we don't want to experience that again. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak on this project?
Hi, I'm Dave Snadbeck. I'm co-president of the Chamber of Commerce. We haven't actually weighed in on this project. We've been presented with the reports that this project may be in motion, but I do know that we look forward to seeing something happen with that building, and this looks like a great opportunity. And we probably will have a formal statement for you at the next hearing. Thank you very much.
Anyone from the museum want to talk about this project? No. Only if you want to. I just, floor's open. No, I probably don't. Up to you.
Always helpful.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to commissioners.
Staff actually has a question for the applicants.
Oh, please.
Because I'm hearing concern from the neighbors about refrigeration units, and I see that the plans show that one of those refrigeration units you plan to retain. So do you have any comments about whether you actually have to keep that refrigeration So the commission's clear, because it looks like the citizens are asking that they all be removed and one is staying?
Right. Yeah, just so the community understands, perhaps, the refrigeration unit that would remain is actually currently running. So what you've been experiencing there recently is what will happen. There's nothing more coming.
Thank you.
What about the containers? It's the same question on the container.
While we're on the subject, can you answer questions about the wood burning oven and the storage containers? It looked like the storage containers were going to be retained on-site according to what I read, but can you clarify that for us?
So the storage units are being used by the current kitchen occupants there, so they are a needed part of their business. So I'm very reluctant to remove them. They are blocked visually, so I guess I'm not clear what the problem is there. And the wood burning oven hasn't been being used since we vacated the building, but it was permitted and was accepted when the kitchen was put into operation.
So you want to, you have any other discussion you want to? Well, I've brought it back to the commission now, so we're kind of gonna have our discussion now. Thanks. Do you want to weigh in?
I think there's a few, there are a few kind of general comments that I think I'd want to make. We actually, when we were doing the general plan for the town, we were having lots of discussions about, you know, what is Fairfax and how to, on the, you know, what's a business or an industry kind of idea that drives Fairfax? And when I reviewed the plans, and it didn't really pop into my head until Morgan kind of said it, that this is the place, I mean, I've heard the stories, but it's the people are still here. And I think, to me, that's the museum, and it's taking that idea, and how do you, how do you make that the center? So it's a museum, which isn't a business, but I think there's an opportunity, at least with Fairfax and the community that this is, that that could become the center for that theme, that idea of mountain biking, you know, the history, having those folks that can tell the stories about it, which, you know, oral histories and things like that are amazing. So I started out a little more skeptical about a museum as in a commercial space, but there's an opportunity that it could create an economic opportunity, because it's the place, the people are still here, and that's really what it's celebrating and what it's bringing together. And it kind of creates something in that part of town which is missing. I mean, that's what we've been talking about, is there's really nothing that draws people to that general area, you know? It's, you gotta cross a lot of streets to get there. And so what could bring people over there? And, you know, so I think that's a good thing. I think that the negative is also, how does it affect the neighborhood and the residential? So the idea of themes and stuff, of events and things like that, I think it'd have to be done judiciously, and you could do it in different locations, it doesn't have to be there. But it's a way to celebrate something that is really central to, Fairfax was central too. And I think that's kind of a, I see that as a really cool opportunity, and that's why I was kind of interested in hearing from those folks. Don't have to be shy, it's a great story to tell. In terms of, you know, the overall use, I guess, I'm starting to be a little bit worried about designing around an office space that actually is really just secondary and was, it seems like we're forcing an office space in the middle of two uses that seem okay. I understand that you want to have other opportunities to rent out extra space, but if storage is a need for the kitchens, it seems to me that that space inside the building is also available. And there's a lot of extra conditions that are being driven by that office space. If the design was done for a client, and now there's no client, and it's really the intent now would be to do the museum and to keep the kitchens, and then that space in the middle is just going to be empty, I'm wondering why we would be really considering designing around that space without having sort of an idea what it would really be. So that's my other concern. On the design side, I think what Morgan described, and I think the way it's presented is cool, it's attractive, it'll catch the eye. It's certainly a new look, but a good look for that spot as you're going by, so I have a lot of good thoughts about that. So, these are my thoughts.
Design-wise, I agree. I think it's a great design, I think it's a great look. We certainly would like to get something in there soon. I'm just wearing my economic development hat. And I think both the concern of no tenant for the office space, although if there's the idea of doing events, if that can be more of a multipurpose event space and designed as such and leased out, we have the pavilion, which is a great local event space. We have this space, we don't have anything much smaller, and I do hear a need for that in our community, so we may want to keep that in mind. I understand the concern of the residents in the area of having a lot of car traffic and delivery trucks. 100 employees, though, versus maybe 20 or 24, and if we don't even have office space. I'm just looking at job opportunities and tax receipts and other uses that can maybe come in a very large, very central location. So that's my main concern. I like the design, I like the idea. Again, keeping with the town, but trying to be creative in how we use our spaces.
I like the proposal. I think it's appropriate to divide the building into different tenants. I think it's gonna be easier to rent out parts of it than finding a large tenant to take the whole space. So I'm okay. With that, I like the design, and I like what the proposal in general.
Mr. Moore, do you have something to add?
I just wanted to add something to your discussion about the office space as an idea to throw out on the table. Linda's quick research just happened in terms of the parking requirements for retail versus the office space. It's the same. So it would be within your purview if you wanted to open up the option for the owner and/or the future tenants to either use that middle space as office space or retail space.
Nice touch. Thank you. I love this proposal. I love seeing a big, large space being used creatively. I think that this location especially needs some enlivenment at this point. It was pretty lively when the Good Earth was there, but, and I think this is a really, really creative way to use that building. I love seeing that it fulfills all of our dreams in our general plan, that, I mean, the list goes on about the things that it fulfills within our general plan, which is kind of affirming, having spent enough time with that than I ever want to spend. So I think it's a great proposal. I love the idea that we're gonna have a mid-century modern building with a mural on one end of town, and an Art Deco building with a mural on the other end of town, and we've got this kind of architectural diversity going on, and really being able to read those nicely. And I would be very open to the allowance of retail space in there, so that the flexibility of the building itself is higher. My biggest concern is the wood burning stove, the pizza oven. I can't tell you how many meetings I've been to hearing about the air quality compromised from that thing. And I understand that the kitchen should maintain its flexibility too, but I'm having a hard time justifying not putting a condition on the reuse of that. I know you're not using it right now, but I think we need to look pretty hard at that in terms of, you know, our carbon action plan and our air pollution and the quality of life in town, and many different reasons to maybe put some limits on the wood stove, the wood oven, which seems like kind of an odd thing to have driving anything. But it's come up so many times, and I think it's time to address it head-on. So I would like to see there be some conditions put on the reuse of that, not necessarily decommissioning it forever, forever, but definitely having it conditioned in a way that if it is going to be re-put back into use, that it happens with some discussion and some limitations and maybe timeframes or something, new scribbers on it or something. So that's my take.
I think that, and I don't know if it's a concern now or not, but I do, I don't have any concern over adding a condition about major deliveries. I think whether we have to get in, the major deliveries after 8:00 a.m., I think that seems reasonable. It's a kitchen that's not, you know, they're not stocking shelves at 5:00 a.m. like the other discussions we've had. The concern about the parking on-site, I think whether it's, you know, there can be signage that, you know, I don't know how we deal with that, but it's, I know around the Good Earth now, I think the town put up some signs for, you know, no, you can park, it's residential parking only or something like that. I mean, those are possibilities, at least if, you know, Claus is, if it becomes a problem, it seems like that could be addressed at that time more than trying to guess at it And it sounds like, and I'm still a bit confused, but it sounds like the refrigeration units that are exterior are not causing a problem. But I'd appreciate if staff made sure of that. I still feel like there's a little bit of contradiction from what I've heard tonight and what is presented. It says nothing's going to change outside, but then I'm hearing they have changed. So again, I know there's the generator for the inside, running the store refrigeration, that's going away, but the three external units, there's three 8-by-24 containers, one 8-by-14 walk-in, two small heat pumps. It says they're all remaining. I don't know if they're causing a problem or not, it sounds like they might not be, but, but what I heard from Morgan was that they were all going away. So I'm just, I want to make sure that whatever it is.
Yeah, the three containers are staying.
No, I understand.
Yeah, that's all staying. And what I thought I heard the one neighbor that lives closest to that say is that it's been great for him since, I don't want to put words in your mouth, it's been okay since the Good Earth stopped operating from there.
So whether it's...
And the refrigeration unit and the heat pumps are still being used.
Right. And so there's refrigeration units, and then there's the generator for the inside refrigeration.
Those are going away.
That's what's going away. Yeah. It's still confusing, but that's okay.
The one that's there and running right now will remain. All the other ones that are out of commission will be taken away.
And if they want to add one, they have to come back and get a permit. I think that's really kind of...
Yeah, if they put anything else outside, they need to come back and modify their use permit.
Or they want to change one of their storage units to a refrigeration unit. I mean, I guess that's kind of what I'm trying to get at.
You're approving this set of plans, so that's what, that's what those containers are, you know, supposed to be, a container and one refrigeration unit. If they start changing it, the use permit can be called up at any time. So if the neighbors notice a change in the noise volume, they have a right to request that the use permit be reviewed.
Yeah, and I guess I keep looking at A2, seeing three 8-by-24 containers. None of them are, it doesn't say any of them are refrigeration units. That's why I keep being confused. There's a refrigeration unit that's outside, but I, so, anyway.
It's kind of a dotted line right next to the containers, and so it's hard to see, little dotted line. That's the walk-in refrigerator.
So the 8-by-14 walk-in is the refrigerator?
Right.
It's dotted. So I think the other thing, and I should have asked this earlier, but I was looking at the pictures more and more, and I'm trying to figure out how there's 25 feet between the east wall and the property line. I'm looking at the cars parked, they look like they're right up against the wall, and they're in the road. So I'm, the plans show that there's 10 feet between the wall and the parking spaces, and the parking spaces are 19 feet long. So I don't know, I know this is the wrong time to ask it, but the more I looked at pictures, four and two, those cars are parked right up against the wall, they're not 10 feet away from the wall. I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out.
There's a sidewalk between the cars and the building, and there's a sidewalk between the...
I'm sorry, could you turn on your microphone?
I'm sorry. As I remember, in photo number two, you can kind of see, there's essentially a sidewalk between the wall, the east wall of the building and the bumpers of the cars there.
Right.
So there's a space in there. And then there is essentially the equivalent of a sidewalk.
Which is a drainage ditch.
Behind the cars, yeah.
But, what I'm saying is...
So the property line...
That the new design is gonna push out five feet to get a ramp, and then five more feet to have stairs down. So that's what I'm trying to figure out where that space is, because that's gonna move all those cars into the road, essentially. That's, I just want to...
Into the drainage ditch, yeah.
Yeah. I'm just trying to figure out if that's, I mean, it could be that the roads across the property line, I don't know. It just seems a little bit squeezed from the way, I think the design plans make sense, but when I look at the pictures and have that memory...
You can ask the architect, I mean, you could ask the architect to address that. The fact that you think the photos, it looks tight, and he's indicating that he can meet the requirements.
Right. And I guess my question, maybe it's, so Morgan, my question is, is the, the road pavement doesn't seem to cross the property line, or does it? And I'm looking at that west, the east wall?
The west or the...
The east side.
The east side.
Yeah, so you're gonna have the, I'm looking at A2. You're gonna have five feet for the ramp coming out, where you have the door, and then five more feet for the stairs kind of exiting out. and then five more feet for the stairs kind of exiting out, and then all of those parking spaces, like 11 through 24? To get the 19 feet. I guess I'm looking at your pictures that are submitted and remembering that the cars park really close to that.
There's a five-foot wide walkway.
Sorry.
Right down along the east side of the building, there's a five-foot wide walkway. And the cars are pulled up to that.
To that, so five more feet back.
And it's, there's really no sidewalk, but there's no curb where those cars park. The parking places have been pushed back to that property line. And then the sloping area behind those cars is technically the sidewalk.
Okay, so, which kind of looks like where the water would flow if it's raining.
Sorry?
Where the water would flow if it's raining. It's kind of the low spot on the side of the road. I was just, it seemed from the design that there's more space than what it seems like when you're out there looking at it. But if you formalize spaces, maybe that's, because people are parking where they...
The hope was to be able to, you know, get that exit way along that wall there and also give a little room for landscaping to...
Right, which I think it's nice. It makes that whole wall look much better. It's just a matter of, is that pushing those cars out into the road is really what I...
I mean, if need be, we... So far, it works with the property line there and the 19-foot-long parking place.
Okay. That's fine. I think maybe it's just that there's never been a really hard line that people pulled up to, so they're sort of, cars pull closer and farther away.
Yeah, it's kind of, you know, if there's a tree there, then it's one thing, and if there isn't, it's another thing.
Okay. I'm good, thank you.
It's classic Fairfax parking.
Morgan, I have a question also. That area that's between the proposed walkway along the side of the building and where you say you're trying to put maybe some landscaping, is there a curb there? Or is that flush with the...
That's along the east side of the building?
Yes.
That's excavated out. That's about 27 inches below grade to get down to the level of the floor inside the building. That retaining wall will have a... Probably will have a guardrail on it, although it isn't 30 inches high, so technically it doesn't need one, but we'll probably have a guardrail there anyway, so nobody takes a header off of it. But it is, grade comes up as it goes towards the rear of the building, whereas the interior floor is level. So at the rear, I think at the rear of the building there at the northeast corner, I think I've got an elevation there, I think it's 34 inches maybe. But that exit way does not go all the way to the rear of the building.
I guess my question is that planter area that's between that walkway and the parking spaces, is there a curb that's between the planter and the parking space, or is that flush? Because that could be an opportunity. You can sometimes overhang your parking stall to get, you can get sometimes a little more room in there.
I think all we have there is wheel blocks, and that's about it. But we could, we could take advantage of that. I'll never admit it, but that's a good idea.
Any other questions for staff or comments on the project or discussion?
I think the only other discussion, I think, is I would be interested in having the museum idea really work with the Chamber of Commerce and really figure out ways to make it something that kind of takes it to that next level. Because I think it's, as I mentioned earlier, it's how do you make that part of town, that commercial district? How do you make it attractive? How do you get people there? And I think that's, it's creative ways of doing it and telling stories. It's more than just having the museum there. It's how you interact with the folks that might be coming and how do you get people to be interested in coming there, so... Because I think that really gets at that economic question. I think it's an opportunity, but it's, you know, museums can't be static. You know, it's the story and it's how it's presented that really generates and really builds that interest. So I think that's an opportunity that hopefully can be pursued.
Well, it sounds like we have some thoughts on where this can go. So does anyone want to put forth a motion? We have a couple of conditions we could add to the resolution. Anybody want to take a stab at it?
So I just want to double-check with staff. So it's all in the resolution. We don't have to worry about the conditions up front. So we don't have to add them in two places this time. It's only in the resolution where we have to add them.
Oh, conditions, right.
Yeah, so...
Correct.
From what I heard, I think you described it, one condition that would be that the future use of the wood oven would have to...
Require a use permit modification.
Yeah, so maybe that's a way of just saying it.
Yeah, maybe come back and explain what they're using it for.
So this is going to go, I think, under item, it would be item 17 on the first set of... Whereas the commission has made the following findings. So 17, that a use permit would be required for any future use of a wood burning stove. Use permit modification for future use of wood burning. And then item 18 would be major... Limit deliveries to after 8:00 AM. Or no earlier than 8:00 AM. I don't know what "major" means either. But it seems like it's reasonable.
I think it's cleaner to just say limit all deliveries.
Limit deliveries.
Yeah.
Limit all of deliveries to no earlier than 8:00 AM or after 8:00 AM.
An additional, I don't know if it's a condition or just an allowance to keep the mixed-use permit open to retail as well. Is that a condition?
I'd go ahead and put it in the, let's think about, no, I would add it under, I don't even want to do this. Hang on a second, let me look at the reso. I would say, could we put restaurant and in case there's a cafe or other purposes we want in there? It's allowed in that district. I'm sure we listed the uses. We have the cafe, well...
I guess the question is, does it change the parking?
Yeah, so you want to change the first whereas on the resolution, where it lists the permitted types of mixed use to include whatever you would like it to include. Let me just make sure restaurants have the same parking requirement.
I think it'd be a different use, I mean, it'd be a modification of the use permit.
It's...
You'd have to digest that, I think, a little bit. I don't think on the cuff you want to just go that far.
Yeah, I'd just keep it, I'd just keep it to retail.
I think, you know, retail use or other flex space, low-impact flex space.
So office space, retail, or other flex space?
Complementary event space. There could be a situation where the kitchen's used for an event without formalizing retail, you know.
Yeah, and just for complementary event space, the way I imagine it is, it's still driven by the time limits that are part of condition three. It doesn't sort of open it up to any event you want to have at any time.
Oh, right, if they, you know, and, right.
So it's the complementary event instead of event, okay. I would...
The hours are listed in the resolution, so they're, you know, if they try to come in with something that goes outside those hours, they'll have to come back to you.
So my question on the residential signage, like, is that something that the town does if there's a problem? Or is it something that the operation, that may be generating the parking problem? I'm just wondering if it becomes a problem later on, would it then become the town's need to put it in? Or would it still be the requirement of the operator?
I think if it really became an issue like it did with the Good Earth, the neighbors could request that the use permit be reviewed if the parking was spilling over into their neighborhood and, you know, hours that weren't approved.
I think that's the best way to deal with it.
And just a reminder, when we get started on the town center plan process, we'll be looking at comprehensive parking strategies.
Just on that, on the use permit that the applicant had, it looked like one night a week they wanted to stay open until nine, but we don't have that in the resolution. Was that changed from the applicant?
I didn't, that wasn't in the application form unless, there was some handwritten notes of the architects that I couldn't read.
Well, it said the museum's projected hours, but then it went on and it said one evening, probably Thursday, open until nine. We thought we heard that there was one night a week that they wanted to stay open later.
There was talk about, I think it was Thursday night, it was one night a week, it would go later.
Right. It said one night a week, probably Thursday will stay open until nine. The kitchen hours would be eight to six and the business nine to five, regular office hours.
While I'm up here, could I just ask that on number five, it specifies a lot line adjustment. Could we change the language to just say easement or something would satisfy the fire department and building department?
I guess so, but they, the building and fire told me that the only way to satisfy it was that an easement wouldn't meet their requirements. So I don't know if their requirements is just exiting or the location of the wall and windows.
Yeah, so the language is in there that if the regulatory authority, i.e. the joint powers authority of the fire department or the building official drops their, well, in this case, the Ross Valley Fire Department drops their requirement for the lot line adjustment,
It'll go away.
then it can be modified.
Okay.
Without coming back.
Without coming back. So it's up to you to work it out with the fire.
Building and fire.
Building and fire.
Okay. Thank you.
So question for staff. In the request, it said probably Thursday until nine. It's not part of the packet.
Yeah, I think I was looking at the application form. So you want to modify that in the reso?
Yeah.
Okay.
And theoretically, the flex space in the middle, if it was used in an event for them staying open for the bicycle museum and then using that space, they want to stay, have that space open until nine also, where the office was going to close at five.
Well, I think it's just, so the museum would be Thursday through Monday from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM? With... And would we just say with occasional Thursday nights until nine? I mean, is that a way to deal with it? Or every Thursday night? It says probably, so I'm just kind of...
Could it be Thursday 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM and then Friday through Monday, 11 to 7?
Thursday 11 till 9:00 PM. And then Friday through Monday. 11 to 7. Okay.
I'm just kind of reiterating what you said about the office space, modifying the hours for the office space also so that it goes beyond 5:00 PM on Thursdays in case the museum needs to use that space for overflow or special events.
So the discussions we've had, it may be an office, it may be retail. It's almost that we would see it again?
I'm just thinking, we were covering that as museum use, so...
Are we going to see it, yeah, if it's used as flex space for the museum?
I would add another bullet and just say if the center, you know, location is used for flex space for museum events, it may remain open Thursday until, Thursday until 9:00 PM, if that's the day of the event.
Or just say it's limited to the museum hours.
Yeah, because you don't want the office or the retail, it could cause a problem. If an office or retail use goes in there and wants to start staying open till, you know, different hours, they would need to come back. That's the way you've got it right now.
Well, right now, it's 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Is that Monday through Friday or is that seven days a week?
They indicated it would be those hours during normal business hours, so I'm assuming Monday through Friday. You might ask them if it was retail, if they would want to ask that those hours be extended? Because you have the ability to change it right now.
And the kitchen is at 8:00 AM, is it, I guess, is it seven days a week or five days a week? We should clarify that with the applicant.
Yeah, I was assuming it was seven days a week because it wasn't specified, yeah.
But we should specify if it's every day.
Morgan, can you specify for us whether the office and wholesale, commercial kitchen are operating seven days a week or five days a week with these hours?
Mark, do you know?
The kitchen space currently is predominantly used weekdays, but it is used some on the weekend too during business hours.
So for office and kitchen, we'll just say... Yeah, I think we need to be clear.
The office space, you know, doesn't have a tenant per se. It seems as if it should be at least seven days a week. I don't think...
Yeah. Just making sure it's clear and doesn't become confusing later on. All right, so at least from my notes, it looks like we're talking about adding two conditions. One is that a use permit modification would be required for the use of the, for future use of the wood burning stove and that no deliveries would occur prior to 8:00 AM. And then modifying condition three, so I'm going backwards, sorry, that the hours, the museum would be Thursdays 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM and Friday through Monday 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Office 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Sunday through Saturday. Wholesale kitchen, commercial kitchen 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Sunday through Saturday. And then a new bullet, which is if the center location is used for museum events, that it also would be limited to museum hours. And then we talked about modifying the first whereas. to museum hours. And then we talked about modifying the first whereas. So, the use, the existing, mixed-use development of the existing commercial building at South Street Boulevard to a museum, office space, and then add retail or complementary events space, and then a commercial kitchen and one living unit. So, we're adding retail or complementary event space into that list.
So, that's in that whereas?
Yeah.
That's in that whereas, but it's also in number one under the second whereas?
On page ten.
Make sure it shows in both places. On page ten, yes, thanks.
The same change to page ten.
Thanks. And then Linda, you mentioned something about the lot line adjustment is required if the office space is formalized.
Yeah. What we wanted to do is on page eleven.
Right.
I wanted the same language that was under the building official condition to be, to replace the lot line adjustment language under the fire department condition.
Okay.
Because the fire department condition makes it seem like the lot line adjustment would be required for any building permit there. And, and we really didn't intend it unless it's for the middle space modification.
So, turn it off. I'll make a motion to approve application thirteen dash sixteen with the modifications that we've articulated. Do you want me to go through them one more time? From the front to the back? I'll start at the front this time. How about that? So, the, the first whereas adds that the mixed uses include a museum space, museum, comma, office space, and then add retail or complementary events space. And then it also already has a commercial kitchen and living unit. Modify condition three or finding three, which is the hours of operation so that the museum would be Thursday, eleven AM to nine PM and then Friday through Monday, eleven AM to seven PM. For the office, hours of operation, nine AM to five PM, Sunday through Saturday. For the commercial kitchen, eight AM to six PM, Sunday through Saturday.
Can I just interrupt? Because I think you, we want to say the office slash retail space for that middle bullet, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Office slash retail, yeah. And then a new bullet, a fourth bullet, that says if the center location is used for museum events, use is limited to museum hours or approved museum hours. And then page ten, under the second whereas, condition one would add, so it's any change from the uses of a museum, general office space, and then we need to add retail space and complementary events space. And then it would continue on and wholesale commercial kitchen shall require a modification. And then two new conditions to the end of this list, condition seventeen, a use permit modification would be required for future use of the wood burning stove in the commercial kitchen. And then a new, another new condition eighteen, that no deliveries shall occur prior to eight AM. And then we would also be using the same language from the building official condition for condition two of the fire department conditions. Is that it? So, that's my motion.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's a unanimous approval.
I'd actually like to abstain from the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said aye. Okay. Three ayes and one abstention.
And there is a ten-day appeal.
There's a ten-day appeal and a $500 fee associated with it. Okay. Let's, we're going to move on to the minutes from June twentieth. Does anyone have any changes or comments about the minutes for June twentieth, Lenning, Commissioner meeting?
I looked them over and I think they were fine.
I make a motion to pass the minutes from the Thursday, June twentieth, 2013 meeting? Aye.
Aye.
So, we're going to move to the planning director's report.
I'll be very brief. Next week, it's a special, the council meeting for July, they got moved to the 24th. We're taking the, your recommended amendments to the noise ordinance up for the presumed first reading. Let's see, what else? Arjit is done with his internship. And Arjit, if you're watching in Mumbai, because he went home on Tuesday, we miss you already and your parents. Come on home soon. And that would be it. Thank you.
We have on the discussion items, the, the review of the general plan implementation program that Shelley wanted to hear about, but you were...
Can I speak to that?
Please.
That's really Shelley's emphasis in bringing this forward. I would just like to perhaps, it'd be nice if she was here to have this conversation. So, your, your piece of the matrix is just three pages. Lucky you, planning and building is seven. So, what I did with all of these sheets is I went through and I checked what had been accomplished already, because there are some things like the rezonings that have taken place. I asterisked the things that I thought were a priority and, and of need to be moved on. And then I sort of created a wish list of anything, if we had the luxury of the time to get to. And then I didn't mark those things, I think, that will just be on the long-range wish list. So, I would encourage you to take a look and I can, if you send me an email, I can send this to you in the, you know, bifurcated way. It's of just your duties. But it really helped me going through all of it to sort of look at what we've done, look at what's a higher priority. And, you know, we're very short-handed staff, so we can't do everything. This was a, quite a large wish list, general plan-wide, almost 500 programs, which is impossible to sort of imagine getting done in such a small staff. So, I would just continue it, bring it back, but with a caveat, if you all could do your homework to sort of rank what you think. And I will go walk you through what I think we've done, what, what I see as the priorities. But I want to, I would love the feedback from you all as a group to make sure I understand what your priorities are. That'd be it.
So, we re-agendize it?
Yes. Great. Thank you.
So, is there, you'll email it to us then or?
Did you get it in the packet this time?
I guess.
No. Then I'll email it. We'll email, we'll email it out with the next packet.
Okay.
And if you want it earlier, just send me an email. And you can tell me right now if you want it. I'll send it to you. I'll go ahead. I'll send it out. I'll send it out. Thank you. And it is available in its entirety form on the, on the webpage. So, and we'll, and I'll send it out again in the packet.
I want it with your, your notes and impressions. That's what I...
You, you want the one with my notes?
With the one you've said, here's what we've accomplished here, what I think are priorities.
Okay. I'll scan that and give it to you.
Because that's really what we're...
Great. I'll scan it to you.
You want that feedback of...
Great.
Yeah, we concur.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. So, we're commissioner comments and requests. Does anyone have any comments or requests?
I, I'm actually, I was out of town about a month ago and came back and wow, there's a big fence right there at Fairfax Gas. So, I'm kind of curious what might be going on.
The, that was for safety, to sort of cordon off the area, because there's a lot of folks that sort of take advantage of the empty space. There are two pieces happening right now. There's the application for the gas station and the convenience store that are coming forward. They're finishing up, completing the application, modifying some of the traffic impact study to accommodate a curb cut coming in off of Broadway. Parallel to that, by the appropriate authorities, there's a ground remediation that's going to be happening to try to alleviate the soil of its contaminants. It's going to be a fairly significant dig and it requires an excavation permit. So, they'll having, they'll be coming before you in parallel for the excavation permit as well as the entitlements for the garage and convenience store. And that's pretty close. They almost, we're almost there, but we got slowed up a little bit. So, stay tuned. It's coming in. And oh, the good news, if I may prematurely, they did come in with a survey, which was in the best interest of both the town and the applicant, who's closed escrow on the property, by the way. And that also, that's, the survey showed the town's easement of Bang Street that we own. And it is looking, I don't want to jump out in front of this though, it looks like there's no conflict between the town in the future if it decides to take that easement and the operation that's going to be proposed. So, that's good all the way around. And then the, the friendly change, at least what we think will be the friendly change of the curb cut coming in off of Broadway, which was brought up by one of the councilmen, Bragman, actually on the traffic impact analysis, asked for that to be examined. So, was moving forward? Yeah. Good.
Any other commissioner comments, questions, discussion items? In light of the fact that Commissioner Hall is no longer, Commissioner Hall, can we recognize his service to the town?
We'll bring it back to, he just resigned this morning. So, we'll, we'll bring it, we'll bring it, we'll, we'll take...
You didn't have a resume done.
We'll do our thing. Yeah.
And with that said, I'm not going to be here at the August meeting.
Ah, so maybe we push it over?
So, if it's possible, I'd love to be there.
You know, it's, right now, August, the August meeting is looking rather hectic.
Yeah.
So, and since I write them, I don't think I could get it done by the August meeting.
Yeah, yeah. So, we'll, we'll bring it in due course. And also, just for the public that might be watching live right now or watching this on a recording, we have now two vacancies on the planning commission. Applications are available at Town Hall. It's a very exciting role. It is a responsible role with some homework that comes with the duty, as you all know. But we are looking forward to receiving any applicants from interested members of the public in Fairfax, residents of Fairfax. We have one applicant who's been patiently waiting, because we like to bring more than one applicant up to the council. So, it would be nice if people are interested, they step up, they fill out the application. And again, we've gone from one empty seat to two now. So, we're going to be looking for other applicants no matter what. So, please step up if you have any interest. It's a great experience. Democracy in action. That's it. Thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you. I think this meeting is adjourned.
Good job.